You guys feeling lonely over there?
No.
No, it's nice. We got some space. Y'all look a little crammed up over there. There's Larry.
Call the meeting order, madam. Quickly, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mayo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Will.
I ask everyone to stand, please. We have an invocation by Vice Mayor Dr. Miller, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
In 1966, Stephen Seals penned the song for Buffalo Springfield, "For What It's Worth." And I think these lyrics still apply. "There's something happening here, but what it is, isn't exactly clear. There's a man over there with a gun telling me I've got to beware. Paranoia strikes deep into your life. It will creep. It starts when you're always afraid. You step out of line. The man will come and blow you away." Let us pray. Dear Lord, what is happening here? People are spewing out hatred and mayhem, madness, a turbulent flow of hate, disrespect, intolerance of a fellow man. Innocent bystanders are gunned down in the street. Men are beaten senselessly to death for no reason. Something is happening here, but what it is, isn't exactly clear. Tyrants unleash missiles to destroy homes, playgrounds, hospital nurseries. A cold, dark, underground bomb shelter is a child's new playground. Young children can't seem to understand why their parents are so afraid. Jew kills Arab. Arabs stabs Jews. In the name of religion, for God's sake. What is going on here? What is happening here? What has happened to love, respect, love thy neighbor as thyself, tolerance of your fellow man? Lord, we must stand together to stop the killing, stop the hatred, love one another. If we don't, Lord, we will destroy ourselves, our planet, and everything, every living thing on Mother Earth. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say good evening to those of you who are here in the chambers. Good evening to those you're viewing us via River City TV or Facebook or in your homes. We want to welcome you tonight. Have a proclamation. We'd like to have our Director of Economic Development, please come forward as I read this proclamation. Cory, good evening to you.
Good evening. Whereas the city of Danville has a proud heritage in the textile and tobacco industries. And whereas by welcoming foreign investments, the city has been able to diversify and strengthen its economy after the decline of these industries. And whereas our economy has become global, as has the economy of the nation. And whereas nine countries are represented within the city limits of Danville and bordering business parks. And whereas on this day, we thank the foreign-based companies that have invested in our region, employed our workforce, and have provided cultural diversity in our community. Now therefore, I, Alonzo L. Jones, Mayor of the City of Danville, along with Danville City Council, do hereby proclaim Sunday, February 12th, 23th, as International Business Appreciation Day in the city of Danville. And we wish these companies many, many more years of success in the city of Danville, given on my hand the 7th of February. Council members, let's give all of our foreign businesses a big hand, please, as you may come in.
You mayor, members of council, thank you so much for this resolution celebrating the diversity of our business community. We are so very fortunate that a large number of international firms have decided not only to invest within Danville, Pennsylvania County, but continue to grow and grow successfully. And so I extend the invitation to residents throughout the region to help us celebrate on the 12th and celebrate all of the investments that have been made from our international corporate clients.
Thank you so much, and thank you for those clients. Thank you so much. Under Communications, before we go there, a couple of weeks ago, I just want to ask all our firefighters, firefighters, please stand, please, firefighters. I just want to say on behalf of city council, our city manager, and our city staff, unfortunately, we had someone who passed away on Lewis Street a couple of weeks ago. And the outstanding work that you all did, we just want you to know that your council and the citizens of this community sincerely appreciate all that you all have done and are doing. And I'm sure the families of the person who passed away feel these sentiments as well. Council, join me in thanking our firefighters for all the work that they do. Thank you so much. You may have a seat. Under Communications, if you desire to speak on any item agenda that's not on the agenda, may come forward at this time. If there's not a public hearing, you may also speak on that agenda item. Anyone desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, or an item that doesn't have a public hearing, may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, and we welcome you here this evening. Good evening, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jones and city council. I certainly appreciate. My name is Kenny Lewis, residing here in the city of Danville. And I certainly do appreciate.
Your address, please. Your address, please, Mr. Lewis.
Address, 117 Skylark Drive in Danville, Virginia. Thirty-eight years over there. But I do appreciate, you know, this opportunity to come share with you all. I know people think about the tutorial program, but I'm coming on behalf of the faith-based nonprofit called Better Together. And Better Together has been together now about seven to eight years, and is a faith-based nonprofit where we have some ministers on there who, our target is to, got about six focus areas, and one of them is education. And so I want to focus on that tonight. And we do appreciate the board members of, matter of fact, on our faith-based board, Better Together, we got Mr. Mayo is on there. We have Dr. Philip Campbell is on there. And matter of fact, probably your second dad, Mr. Bill Mann is on there. He's on there. And what our goal is to do is just to announce that we are, which I know that the council has also announced that education is our number-one priority. And Better Together has placed education as their number-one priority and coming along with our church-based tutorial program. And what we would like to announce is that we're going to do an all-out blitz in trying to get all our churches. We're targeting churches. We're targeting community centers. We're targeting daycares. We're targeting AVIDDCC. I haven't even had relatives come to me and say, Kenny, we want to start tutorial programs in our real estate offices. So we are trying our very best to go all out, to ask Danville to, let's come together, to develop these homework network centers to help our kids succeed. And so we are asking for your help, and we appreciate your help, because, matter of fact, I just, you know, worked with Cory, and you all supporting our big event that we're having on 18th of February at the institute. We certainly do appreciate that continual support, Kenny. We certainly do appreciate all the help you've given us. And I would like to give a quick comment about, one of our board members, she's administrator over at Sacred Heart. She's on our board, Better Together. She said, man, every time I hear that city council, it's almost like it's a pep rally, because they're always celebrating some good going on. And I said, you're right about that. A lot of great things are happening here in Danville. And I just want to say that come alongside of us, as we make education number one, let's do all we can to get our educational system back to where it should be, you know? And what I want to do right quickly, one of our sites, which we got about 20 sites, I give each one of y'all a brochure. We got about 20 sites here in Danville. And I'm telling you, we've partnered with the school system, and we got this federal grant to help pay teachers to go inside those community centers to help tutor those kids. And man, it has raised the level of these kids, and the kids are just performing. And we're receiving grants to give kids incentives to go, you know, when they get As and Bs, they get an incentive. And on a road, they get an incentive for that also. And one of our sites, over there, Evening Light Cathedral, over there on Bradley Road, Bishop Kidd, and I got Pastor Kidd is there. And I'm going to ask their coordinator, Mr. Gene Johnson, just to come and just share just a few minutes, because, man, they've got, you know, they've got kids over there doing a really good job. They are in the hardest of the issues over there, and I'm going to ask Gene to come forward right now. And they are really having an impact, and we've got so many sites that are doing it. But we got so many more to do, we can do. So I'm going to ask Gene to just come share right quickly the progress of their site.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Good evening to you.
Good evening. Good evening to everyone. I want to first of all thank Mayor Jones for allowing me this moment right here. And to all the Danville City Council members, we thank you, and to the Public Schools Board, we thank you for all. And to the sponsors and supporters of this worthy cause, we thank you. Thank you for all the opportunity to speak on the behalf of Danville Community Church Tutorial Program. To have such a given and goal-setting program in place is needed in guiding the future of our future citizens. Giving each child an opportunity to become the best they can and will be. To understand the children, the impact of this program has on the students is so rewarding. To see them come in with excitement every afternoon, with energy, excitement with talking about their day at school, to what they learned in school, ending with, I have homework. The tutorial program has inspired us as instructors, and a couple of instructors are here tonight, as well as the students. It has inspired us to develop an IEP. Many educators know what that means. But for us, if you're wondering what it entails, IEP, inspire, equip, promote. We inspire these young minds to be the best that we know they can be, servicing the whole child, mind, spirit, and well-being, demonstrating love and respect for everyone. Not making a difference in each other, but cheering each other on, praising and awarding them for the small accomplishments gained. They get excited when we notice the smiley face they receive from doing well in school. We applaud them for being a model student, inspiring and encouraging them to continue good behavior. When a student gets a 100 score on their assignment with us, they are allowed to shout, I made 100. We all stop. We clap our hands. Just last week, we had about 15 students that were awarded gift cards for their excellent academic achievements. Equip with the assistance of Danville Public Schools and our director, Mr. Kenny Lewis, of the Danville Community Church Tutorial Program, and his awesome staff, as well as all the sponsors, the success of students start with you all. Because of the resources made available through the tutorial program, each child has access to go the extra mile and to get the extra help they need. We aid in equipping students with every opportunity to excel in every area of their lives. The parents are pleased that their children have the ways and means to reiterate positive goals that is necessary in their child's future. We've had students to cry, not to want to leave, to go home from tutoring. This tutorial program aids in shaping and equipping every child with academic and life-skill tools geared toward being successful. Promote, promoting and encouraging the students to set goals and work hard toward them. Never giving up. Keep striving. You can do this. By having them to sign in every day, it may seem small for some, but they sign in every day. They can actually see their own improvement. Allowing them to participate in the devotional part of the program builds confidence. When they stand to do the prayer, they have the attention of all. When they read the scripture, they're reading with confidence, pride, and knowing they can succeed. Working with only two hours a day, two days a week, with consistency, we know the tutorial program is making a difference in the homes, in the school, and the community. Parents have expressed their gratitude for having such a program in place. The parents are asking if we could add two more days. When a parent tells us that their child had a good progress report, or they are behaving better at home and in school, we know that the tutorial program has something to do with that. So we are very grateful for that. And in closing, we want to share with you some success stories. We have students that were performing below grade level, who have now excelled to average or above grade level. We have a sixth grader who never liked to read, now wants to read the scripture every time she comes to class. We have a student that when he first started, his mother had to drag him in the building.
I know you say you're closing, but just take, your time is up. Take 30 more seconds.
He had to drag him in the building, and is now being evaluated to be placed in a regular classroom. We just want to say in our closing that we are thankful for the opportunity to serve Danville's children. IEP, inspire, equip, and promote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Yeah, just give her a hand.
Yes, any questions y'all have?
Before any questions, Mr. Lewis, I just want to say, you and I worked together, and council was working with you, in church-based tutorial program. But thank you. I know you don't come here for that. Before I got here tonight, I was just thanking the firefighters. And most Tuesday nights before I get to council meeting, I get an update on education and how education is going, as you stated, is our number-one priority. And tonight, I got an update on my way here, and I just can't thank you all. All the instructors, please stand. All the instructors and students, if you got an instructor, please stand. Let's give them a hand. And I say thank you on behalf of council and myself, and council members, I speak on the behalf. Schoolteachers, like firefighters, policemen, and everyone else, they're really catching it. They're really going through a whole lot. And we really, really, really need you, and we need everyone, the village, to wrap our hands around these young people. People don't know what they're going through. I heard the mother just now said that those kids get so excited, and we don't know what they're faced with. Yesterday, council members and city staff had an opportunity to go to the homeless shelter. One of the saddest things about, you know, we cut the ribbon for Norma's place as I close. The saddest part about it is, Mr. Lewis, when I took that tour, they took me downstairs, and they said, Mayor, here's a room that a family comes, whether it's a father, mother, and children. And they had two rooms like that, and it was very disturbing. So we don't know what our young people are going through, but the love that you all are showing, and the sacrifices that you all are making in this community, we take it not for lightly. And that's why council made education our number-one priority. I want to say publicly, thank you, and thank all of your sites and everything that you're doing. I'm sure, and to our teachers, our faculty, and our staff, and our school system, all the support that this community can give them, we need it. Any questions for council? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, mayor, thank you. And Kenny, thank you so much, you know, so much of what the mayor just said. I completely agree with. And thank you for giving us 20 sites, over 20 sites. I mean, this is impressive. The information that's on here, can folks find all of this on the website as well?
Lee, before you do that, pause. Kenny, give some information over that microphone, some contact information right quick. There are parents out there who are trying to probably figure out, how can I get my children in this program? I mean, I know about it. There are probably churches, businesses, there are people here. We just talked about the international businesses. Take a second, then I'm going to yield back to Lee, and give some contact information. We have the brochures, but the people watching may not.
Yes. So our website, they certainly can go to our website, is www.dcbtp, which stands for Danville Church-Based Tutorial Program. That's all the acronyms, dot com, all right? And they can reach us at 434-710-6100. And just let us know that you're regarding the tutorial program, and we'll be glad to get back with them. They can email us, text us, and we'll get it, and always getting referrals. They can go online and fill out an application and submit their application, and we'll get it. And so it's available to them. They take advantage of that website, www.dctp.com. And we'll be glad to work with them in a way we can.
Back to you, Councilman Vogler.
Thank you. And that's actually what I was going to ask, was for you to give that out. And for those who are watching on River City TV, Mark, if you could, I know Mark's really great about putting it on there for folks watching on Facebook. That phone number was 434-710-6100, and the website was dcbtp.com. Kenny, thank you so much, and Mark, I think, is in the process of putting it on there right now for folks. Thank you so much.
Councilman Campbell.
Yes, Kenny, I just wanted to say thank you for longevity of your vision. I remember back in 1998, at the beginning stages of this, and to see what has happened and where you are now. We just want to salute you for your efforts and see how God has blessed you tremendously, and your staff, for what you're doing in this community. Our young people need that. Thank you, Kenny.
Councilman Buckner.
Yeah, Kenny, thank you, as always. You guys are doing tremendous work, good godly work in this city, and we really appreciate it. Not just this city. If you flip through here, I think you have 21 sites in the city, and 44 in total, correct?
So we're in the city, in the county, and Caswell, yeah.
So it's beautiful work you guys are doing. Thank you so much, Kenny, for your continued support and investment in our youth. Thank you.
Councilman Will. Speak right into the microphone, please.
Yeah, I've actually seen y'all's action, and the actions y'all have been taking, and it's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Councilman Saunders.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Buckner just spoke about looking at your programs. You are regional. You're North Carolina, Danville, Pennsylvania County, all over. So I think that it speaks well for our city. It speaks well for you and the volunteers as well. So thank you for all that you do, and so you won't forget Dallas Cowboys, won't you?
And Councilman Hood.
Okay, thank you so much to you and your staff for everything that you all do, and being community-based through faith. I think that is key and vital, and everything curves back to that, so you are truly appreciated. Thank you.
Councilman Mayo.
Thanks, Kenny. Thanks for coming and sharing everything that you did. It definitely is, education is number-one. We're pushing for it. I'm glad to be a part of that team with Better Together. And for what we got coming up, which is going to be a Hope and Faith-based either dinner or luncheon. We're asking for all churches that are not a part of it, please, we need you. This is the norm that's going to help our children, especially if our children are in a community where they can't get to a library, they can't get to a computer. But if a church is nearby, it really, really helps. And this is something that I know is going to be successful, so let's keep it going.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Kenny Lewis continues to amaze me. This is just a wonderful thing you've done for the youth. Right before the meeting, he came up and asked me if I'd seen the new track at GW. Well, Kenny Lewis worked with Councilman Vogler and myself on the sports committee, and one of the fruits of that is the new track. It's about to be unveiled at GW. For almost 20 years, there's not been a home track meet. So we're going to have home track meets, and what does this do for the youth? Well, it helps the youth become part of a team, develop their skills. Some of them may be future David Wilsons, who knows, or Kenny Lewis's. I mean, I'm not, but if they're part of a team, and they're working with other youth, guess what? They're not out on the streets. They're not getting into trouble. So Kenny, you're all about the youth. Thank you.
Kenny, you heard from the pep rally tonight. The pep rally, city council is behind you and with you. I think, we're so thankful for the partnership that you have with Danville Public Schools, because it really is our number-one priority. And to you and your team and everything that you're doing, I give you closing remarks.
And I certainly do appreciate it. Thank y'all so much. Always had this wonderful support, so we certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight. We're still in communications. Anyone desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone who desire to speak on any item that's not on agenda, may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, ma'am. My name is Rohar Payne. I've already provided my address to the city clerk. I started my career as an EMT student in 2018. I quickly realized how much I enjoyed learning about EMS services. I developed a passion for EMS and soon decided that I wanted to be a part of nothing else professionally. When I began in the EMS world, I thought that was the best thing there could be. That is, until I responded to my first structure fire. The skill and dedication that I saw put forth by the men and women of the Danville Fire Department was unprecedented. I was in awe of their professionalism and success at quickly extinguishing the blaze. After that first structure fire, my life changed forever. I sought out input from friends and acquaintances who were already a part of the Danville Fire Department. Every single one of them told me what a rewarding career it was. They said there is something new happening every day, and every single day, they get the opportunity to help others. I decided that was the only thing I wanted to do in life, that is, become a firefighter EMT for the City of Danville Fire Department. I began my career with the Danville Fire Department just two years ago. I desired to be excellent in every facet of the profession. I gave my all, my everything, and then my training lieutenants found a little more that I didn't know I had to give. I planned to enjoy a long career with the City of Danville. This is the place that I call home. Unfortunately, inflation struck at a record high. Gas prices skyrocketed. Everything went through the roof. Grocery prices have doubled. Eggs went from 69 cent a dozen to nearly $5 a dozen. It truly has become a struggle to provide. I did all I could do for extra income, but it simply was not enough. The only thing better than living from paycheck to credit card debt was paycheck to paycheck, and that's what I've had to do. One morning, after coming into work at fire station number three, I found out that our fellow city employees in the police department had received a significant raise. This gave me great hope, because it showed me that my city officials cared enough to retain employees and had the financial means to do so. When we asked the city officials what their plans were for the fire department, we were told to sit tight. Our raise was coming very soon. The police only received the same minimum wage increase that all city employees were going to receive. Months come and go, and the only pay increase that firefighters get is their annual pay-for-performance raise. You do not get that raise if you are still in probation from joining the fire department. So I've missed out on one of those pay-for-performance raises. Months go by, no change in pay, no word of future adjustments, only silence, until we had the city manager come to our shift meetings. That's where he told us that they were going to study the problem so that they could fix it accordingly. The study finally returned. What did it say? The information says Danville firefighter's starting pay is 19% below average. Danville Fire Department is not an average organization. We are an ISO Class 1 agency, and we are fully accredited. That is one of only 114 fire departments in North America. This is not your normal fire department. This is not your normal fire department. When Danville officials described how the city's budget was not prepared for this sudden inflation, I expected that to be the same with other localities. To my surprise, every single locality surrounding this area has increased their wage significantly. The town of South Boston start and pay for a firefighter EMT is $42,000. Lynchburg, $48,000. Pennsylvania County is $42,000. Danville was, went from $34,000 to $35,000. And that was to accommodate for minimum wage. I don't believe that your firemen should work for minimum wage. After inflation continued and no raise was imminent, I decided things had to change. That's why last week I was offered a job in another locality, making nearly twice as much than I'm making now with the exact same job responsibilities. In fact, I will be working fewer hours a month and bringing home more money at the end of the day. Get all the same benefits, paid holidays, health, dental and state retirement. Many would think that this jump is a no-brainer. These fellow firefighters are like family and it pains me to walk away, but I have to do so to provide for my family.
Let me first of all, thank you for being here and also thank you for your service to our city. Thank you so much. Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone desire to speak on any item, they come forward this time. Good evening to you, sir.
My name's Nathan Sargent. My address is 1455 River Ridge Road, Danville, Virginia, 24541. I'm here to talk about the pay issue in the fire department and would like to talk a little bit about what it's like being a firefighter. I am a captain and have worked for the Danville Fire Department for 23 years since I was 21 years old. So pretty much my entire adult life, I have dedicated to this department and city. I work at Station 5, that's at 114 Third Avenue. This is my second address and where I spent a third of my life working 24-hour shifts. To put that into perspective, that's a little over seven years I've spent away from my home and family. But the fire station is our home. We cook at least two meals a day that we pay for out of pocket. We wash our own clothes, we mow our own grass, we do most of our own maintenance at the stations, including station remodels, replacing ceiling tiles, painting and anything else that you would have to do or pay someone to do at your own house. Until recently, we had to buy our own furniture, washers, dryers and grills for the stations and we still pay for cable, newspaper and anything we may need for cooking our meals. Just to mention a few things. This journey as a firefighter begins with a five-month academy that consists of close to 1,000 hours of training and certifications, just to be able to be assigned to a station. It takes several more years of training and experience to become proficient and comfortable with all these tasks and responsibilities. Along the way, we get to experience some pretty amazing stuff and a lot of horrific stuff as well. I've witnessed people who've lost everything they have in a house fire. I've had to do chest compressions on people and feel all their ribs crack as their family cries in the background, please save them. I've had to tell the mother that her newborn baby didn't make it through the night. I've had the roof of a building collapse on my crew as we were doing our best to keep someone's home from burning down. I've had to control my emotions when I respond to overdose of a young child who got into their parents' drugs. I've smelled smells that would make a buzzard puke and seen sights that would make the devil cry. As bad as that may sound, that is easy compared to having to go home to your family right after one of these events has happened and act like nothing, like everything is fine and switch back to being a dad and husband. When your spouse and kids don't understand why you seem out of touch or like you don't care about what is going on, or just mad at the world, but you don't wanna tell them why you're not focused on them as you're trying your best to forget about what you just saw. It is not just a switch that you can turn off, yet you find it acceptable to do all this for just a little over minimum wage. That's a real smack in the face when I can drive through the Dairy Queen drive-through and see a sign that says starting pay $13 an hour, no experience or qualifications required. It really makes me question how much the city values what we do for this city. I've heard the statement that recruitment retention is not a problem in the fire department, so we don't need to raise pay. I would beg to differ. When I went through the hiring process around 97, 98, I was competing with about 400 applicants. Now if we have 40 people apply, we are doing good. Also, in my eight years as captain, I've had six firefighters leave. Turner Crawford went to Noriko Fire Department. Alan Plummer left and is now a successful businessman. Matt Atkins went to Colorado and is working with South Adams County Fire Department. Stanley Shelton left for Lynchburg Fire Department. Roar Payne is leaving for Amherst County Public Safety. And I had another firefighter assigned to my station but resigned before they made it there. Three of these six have resigned since the first of the year. All these guys were highly motivated and skilled firefighters and if I had them as a crew of firefighters, I would go head-to-head with any other fire crew in the world. Not only did the Danville Fire Department lose six excellent firefighters, but the City of Danville lost most of these guys and their families as residents of the city. There have been others that have left also, and almost all of them say the same thing. They loved the Danville Fire Department and the people they worked with, but had to go where they can make a better living for their family. When the people of this quality leave, it takes years to fill that void. The men and women of the Danville Fire Department are some of the most dedicated, smartest and talented individuals I have ever met. Even though we are getting paid minimal wages, when those tones go off, we are going to show up making those annoying horns and sirens sound like angels singing and give a million-dollar effort every time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Good evening to you, Mayor.
My name is Jennifer Burke. So I promised Nathan and I didn't speak before this event, but I'll go ahead and read what I've got. Have you guys ever heard the old adage, when everyone else is running out of a burning building, firefighters are running in? They're running into a situation that has more hazards than most any other career. Even with the personal protective equipment they wear, they're still exposed to many hazards like toxins that cause short and long-term health issues, the possibility of being trapped in a burning structure because it collapsed from the destruction of fire, injuries from working in an unsafe work environment, heat exposure, and the list goes on. Nevertheless, they do more than just run into burning buildings. They answer calls when you're involved in an accident, as minor as a fender bender or a major crash. They'll be the first person to provide immediate medical attention that could be the difference between life and death. Or suddenly, you feel like you have a ton of bricks sitting on your chest and you can barely breathe and you call 911 before you lose consciousness. Firefighters will be the first to come. They'll start CPR, they'll perform other medical services right there where you fell out. They'll stay with you and continue care until transport arrives to take you to the hospital. This medical attention could also be the difference between life and death. And the list goes on. Firefighters are public servants. Their purpose is to save life and property. I'm certain everyone in this room has heard about the dangers of firefighting. You've heard it tonight already. I'm here to talk about what these firefighters haven't spoke much about until tonight. I'm the wife of a firefighter that served and protected the citizens and businesses of Danville for almost 25 years. My husband already works 700-plus hours a year, more than the average full-time employee. And let's not forget the hours and days he spent training and earning certifications outside his normal work schedule. And he wasn't paid for these trainings. He spent his money, or our money, to pay for some of these trainings and the classes and materials for certification. The training and certifications enable him to be the best he can be. The big takeaway from this is he has missed so many events, Christmas mornings, other holidays with our four children, due to working 24-hour shifts and training outside the normal work hours. This holds true for every firefighter. Just remember, the fire department is never closed and a career in firefighting is not an unskilled job. I've seen my husband come home from work after working his shift with nothing to say and only wanting to be alone. Most often, it's because he hasn't slept in over 24 hours. Yes, they answer calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Sometimes, he doesn't wanna talk or be around us because he needs to decompress from the horror of not being able to save a person trapped in a burning house. Or maybe a motor vehicle crash where the person trapped inside of the vehicle died before firefighters could get them out of the car to start emergency care. Beginning this calendar year, firefighters were required to sign up for seven mandatory overtime days per year. That's more time apart from the family. Why are firefighters having to sign up for mandatory overtime? Could it be anything to do with firefighter candidate pools dwindling down as new academies begin and end? Maybe it's because the powers that be saw the writing on the wall. Firefighter morale is lower than it's been in many years and the current Danville Fire Department wages are insulting for the job these firefighters do. Since December the 29th of 2022, it's about 40 days ago, five firefighters have either left their shift or confirmed they will be working their last shift soon because they're able to continue their careers elsewhere and make a fair and better wage. Another firefighter retired after serving the city for over 35 years. That's a total of six members in 40 days. So let's compare wages.
Take 30 seconds, 30 more seconds, please.
So yesterday, I looked on Indeed, which is a popular job listing site, to look at some wages. Here's just a few. $14.50 per hour as a city transit driver for Danville. $15 an hour for a retail store associate at CVS. $15.35 per hour as a retail associate at Harbor Freight. $16 an hour for a groundskeeper at the City of Danville. Several months ago, the city used taxpayer-
Ma'am, your time is up. I'll give you one more, I'll give you about five more seconds.
Okay. Several months ago, I'm almost at the end. Several months ago, the city used taxpayer money to pay for the wage study for the fire department.
That's it, I'm sorry. That's your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. So we're still in communications. Anyone desire to speak on any other item, may speak at this time. Just to let you all know who are speaking, we definitely wanna hear from you, that there's a monitor on the thing that gives you your time. I additionally give you 30 seconds and once your 30 seconds is up, so please be advised about the time. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Name is Tom Collins. I live at 909 Popular Trace, Danville, Virginia. So everybody here tonight, everybody here tonight knows why I'm here. I'm here because I'm concerned, just as these firemen, their wives and the gentleman that's leaving, we're concerned for the citizens, right? Connor Wood, Stanley Shelton, Matt Page, Trey Belcher and Roar Payne, who spoke earlier, these guys were incredible people and friends and family members of the fire department. And they're all leaving. And they're not leaving because they want to. They don't have a choice but to leave because we're putting them in situations that they shouldn't be in. They came here with the understanding that they were taking a job, which is a career, a lifetime career for most people, and they took it here in Danville under the good faith that the people of Danville would take care of them. And what we need is for one of you, one of you councilmen, to just stand up and do what each and every one of you know is right. That's all it takes, is one of you to get the ball rolling. Which one of you will it be? Will it be you, Councilman Miller? Will you be the one that stands up for us? Will it be you, Councilman Buckner? Will you stand up for us? Will it be you, Mr. Whittle, that gets the ball rolling in the right direction? Will it be you, Mr. Saunders? In the past, we've had your support, Mr. Hood? You know, we are looking for your support. We need your support because we can't keep doing this. You cannot continue to lose people and lose new people to other localities. They're buying their contracts. We make new people sign three-year contracts that they have to pay back at $15,000, okay? And they prorate that each year. They knock $5,000 off. Other localities don't care. Hey, you can sign a contract, fine, we'll buy it because they know they're getting quality people. They understand that. They appreciate that. They appreciate you paying taxpayer money to train these people so that they can go somewhere else. That's a deal. Why wouldn't you do that, right? Why not? So will it be you? Will it be you, Mr. Vogler, that has spoken up for us? We're waiting, okay? We are waiting, Councilman Vogler, for you guys to step out, one of you guys to step out of your comfort zone. Be the hero to the heroes, okay? Be the heroes to the citizens, to the union, to the fire department and let us and the citizens praise you for that decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're still in communications. Under the consent agenda, I open the public hearing. Anyone desire to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda may come forward this time. Anyone who desires to speak on any item on the consent agenda may come forward this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Councilman Vogler.
Um, yeah, Mayor, actually, just real quick, because for those who are watching and maybe haven't heard us say this about how the process and things that are working, I do think it's important we point this out. First of all, I appreciate all the firefighters and folks who came and spoke tonight. Start with that. I've said this in previous meetings and I believe other council members I've heard say it, but I'll say it again. We're in the early part of our budget process, which will take place over the next couple of months and right around May is when we vote-
Councilman Vogler, hold on. Let us pass this. Let us pass this because I don't, I'm getting looks from the attorney. We got a second. Let me pass this and then we'll come back, I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. There's a second, the second by Councilman Whittle. Any discussion on the motion on the consent agenda? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Ma'am, clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Before you go, Councilman Vogler, let me yield to the city manager. City manager, give us an update on, I heard several council members' names called to stand up and be the hero. All council have stood up and could you explain what council has directed you to do, please? All council members have already stood up and directed, then I yield back to you. City manager.
So we are in the process of, normally every five years, we do a pay study where we look at pay throughout our organization as it compares to other organizations to make sure that we're competitive. And due to a lot of reasons that I've described before, we've had to accelerate that timeframe to do it in a three-year cycle because ever since the pandemic, a lot of change has happened with regard to pay. And it's important to keep in mind for the public that when cities do pay studies and organizations do pay studies, they don't all do them the same year. You know, we'll do it this year, somebody else will do theirs next year, somebody will do it the year after that. So there's never a time where everybody is paying exactly the same as everybody else or it's all competitive in the exact same way. So we all have to kinda look at each other over time and the cycles that we have them. And so we've accelerated the timeframe to do our city-wide pay study, to do it in the current year, which was not budgeted for but will be done. It is important to do it that way because we have to look at, have an independent study to look at what all the pay is as compared to other localities using the same process we've used in the past. Consistency is important, having a process is important and doing it the right way is important. And so this council blessed us- And so the council blessed us with, blessed me with the ability to go forward with this pay study ahead of schedule to make sure that we are paying all of our employees as competitively as possible. This is at the right time because we anticipate the information that we would gather to be done in the March timeframe, which is perfect for our budgeting process. We'll be able to use that information to inform what we're able to do. By then, we'll have a better idea of what our revenues look like. Pay is, when it comes to pay, it's important to make sure that you have ongoing revenues every year in order to make those payments. Because if you give a raise in one year, thinking, using one-time money, not knowing for sure that you'll have the revenue in the upcoming years to pay for it, then you're faced with a tough decision. A tough decision to either cut services, which often means reducing employees, laying people off, or ask people to take pay cuts. And what I don't want to do is to promise to do something, or recommend to promise to do something now when I don't know how much we can afford to pay. And I don't know that because we don't have our revenue picture in. We don't have our, all of our expenditure pictures in right now. And it would be, it would be, it wouldn't be prudent to make a guess about those things and make promises and make changes now that we're not sure that we can keep up going forward. So we are quickly going through this process. We are going to get the information we need, and based on what we can afford, there will be a recommendation on changes to the pay study. And if it's consistent with the last few times we've done that, the last time we did a pay study, again, three years ago, we looked at the market, and then the decision was made because of this is what we could afford at the time, was to move all the minimum salaries for all the positions to 90% of the market, which is a practice that many have to do because that's what they can afford. And that's what we did. And in those cases, anybody that was worked, that was paid below 90% or below the new market minimum, or new minimum for that, for that position, was moved up. And that's what we did because that's what we could afford. It cost hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to do that. It's not, it's not nothing. Every penny on the tax rate generates about $235,000 per year. So when we have to make changes to our pay plan that results in millions of dollars every year of new spending, we have to figure out how to make that happen. Unfortunately, for many years, actually, for the first eight years of the last 10 years, the city's tax base grew at less than 1% per year. Thankfully, the past two years, it's grown at over 3%, and most recently, over 4%. So we are on a trajectory to actually be able to afford doing some things that maybe we couldn't do before.
Talk about what we've already done, even what we've done in January and February.
Yep.
So in January, the, we did plan for a pay increase for all employees except police officers. That was implemented in January. On January 1, it went into effect at the end of January. And that's, that's what we've been able to do. Right now, we're still looking at whether or not we can afford to do more this year. That decision hasn't been made because we don't know if we have the money to be able to pay for it every year. Because again, pay is something that you have to pay for every year. It's not a one-time expense.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And council, so everyone would know, council, as Mr. Lewis stated a few minutes ago, one of their priorities is education, and I'm gonna yield back to Councilman Vogler, but another priority is employee pay, all employee pay, getting all employees pay where they need to be. Councilman Vogler, back to you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. And you're right, I mean, we are looking at and need to address the pay for all city employees. With that being said, for me, it's really simple. I don't need another study to tell me what the firefighters should be paid. I've seen that one. It says what firefighters should be paid, and I can't speak for other council members, but I know during this budget process, my goal is to get the pay to where the study that's already been done says it should be. And that is what I'll be looking for.
Well, let me, let me, let me pause you. That's what all council members have stated. Just wanted to make sure.
Right. And so, and so that's what we're trying to do. And so I say that so that, and again, I appreciate when you guys come and speak, I really do. I just want you to know, we're not waiting for something a year from now, whatever. We're actively working on it through this budget process. We typically vote on a budget around May, and it kicks in right after that. So we are working to get it to where we all know it needs to be. And that is a great start, and I'm not saying that's gonna be the end of it. You know, we'll see where we continue to grow in the years ahead, but I just want to make it clear that just because we might not speak about it at every single meeting, we talk about it almost every day, if not every day. And so we're all aware of it, and we're all very concerned about it. And we appreciate you guys more than I can put into words, and we are gonna get it straight. So we're doing that through this process right now that we do every year. And by the end of it, I feel confident that we will get to the place to where we need to be. And so, again, Mayor, thank you for letting me speak on that, and I appreciate everybody on council who I know is working hard to make this happen.
Thank you. I'll ask a disclosing remark on this issue, and we're going with our business in council. If you've got more comments, you can say it at the end when you go to the roundtable. I would say this, it's never gonna be us against them. Never. This council cares about every last one of our employees. Every time I've had a meeting, I've asked city firefighters to stand up, we appreciate, we appreciate your families, that's all of our employees. You, Councilman Saunders, and every member of this council, talk about our employees over and over and over and over and over again, and we stand. And now, City Manager, thank you for the excellent job that you're doing, listening to the request of council and doing the things you're doing. Under consideration of appointments, boards and commissioners, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, this didn't make the agenda, so I'm gonna read slowly these appointees. The council appointments to boards and commission have met, and we recommend a resolution appointing Morgan Clark to the Planning Commission, Morgan Clark to the Planning Commission, a resolution reappointing Sherman M. Saunders to the Staunton River Regional Industrial Facility Authority, Sherman Saunders, a resolution reappointing J. Lee Vogler to the Staunton River Regional Industrial Facility Authority, J. Lee Vogler, and a resolution reappointing L.G. Larry Campbell to the Staunton River Industrial Facility Authority. Reverend Larry Campbell.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Vogler, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call a roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Consideration of rezoning parcel number 73039 from PSC Plan Shopping Center Commercial to MR Multi Residential, I open the public hearing. Anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, and good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brian Wilson. I reside at 1317 Ringgold Church Road, Ringgold, Virginia. I come to you tonight with the request to rezone our property on the side of Churchview Road from PSC Plan Shopping Center to multifamily residential. I'm representing the Pam Incorporated, which is one of, it's our real estate holding company of the Commonwealth Companies. We are considering apartment buildings or residential housing on Churchview down below our office. We have talked with other contractors who may have an interest in partnering with us or working independently to develop that area. It's prime real estate for that type of community, and we're asking council's blessing.
Councilman Vogler.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Wilson, I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you. And I will, in a moment, if the mayor gives me the privilege, gladly read the resolution to approve this. Because as we've talked about before here, one of the biggest needs we have, you know, you think back 10 years ago, you couldn't give away a house in the city, and you look where we are now. Our biggest headache, if you will, is growth, which is a good problem to have. And so with the need in housing, projects like this are certainly needed and welcome, and I appreciate you for stepping forward to do it.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Anything else? Thank you so much. We're still in public hearing, you may have a seat. Anyone desire to speak on this agenda item, we're still in public here, may come forward this time. Anyone desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance rezoning parcel ID number 73039 from PSC Plan Shopping Center Commercial to MR Multifamily Residential.
Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call a roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Consideration of amending chapter 41 entitled zoning ordinance of the City of Danville to remove requirements of curb and gutter on all new public roads, I open the public hearing. Anyone who desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. Anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending chapter 41 entitled zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986 as amended, more specifically to amend Article 3B, Section A, Article 3C, Section A, Article 3D, Section A, Article 3E, Section A, Article 3F, Section 1, Article 3G, Section 1, Article 3H, Section 1, to remove requirements for curb and gutter on new public roads.
Second by Councilman Vogler, discussion of the motion. Councilman Buckner, then Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, was this, Ken, maybe you can help me if Kenny's not available. Was this a, Renee, was this a study recently by the Army Corps of Engineers that says, that helped with this? Is this saying that our old way of doing it is probably not the best for runoff and drainage?
I've not seen that study that you're referring to, the Army Corps of Engineers, but yes, we did research on our own and staff to determine that best management practices have now determined that this is a better alternative than curb and gutter throughout all development.
Wonderful, thank you.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, that actually, I read it in the agenda packet, but I was wondering if you could come up and speak to that for those who are watching and may not understand and just think, you know, you're skimping out on curb and gutter. Because, you know, for years, that was the thought process, was curb and gutter is a great thing to have, and that was automatically what you did. But, you know, as time goes on, you learn things, and things that were popular in the 1980s might not be relevant to today. So again, can you maybe just elaborate a little bit more about, not necessarily the financial side of it, but the runoff and environmental side of it?
Sure, absolutely. Our zoning code was adopted in February-
Speak directly to that microphone, someone may not be able to hear you, please. Thank you.
So our zoning code was adopted in February of 2004, so that's when the curb and gutter recommendation or requirement was placed in to order. We've determined in the past now with EPA studies and other things that have happened with best management practices for stormwater conveyance systems, that curb and gutter actually has some, I would say not the benefits that they had anticipated, because now we're looking at pollution that is actually accumulating, debris that's accumulating in the curb and gutter, there's difficulty with street cleaning. So now you'll be able to remove that curb and gutter requirement, we'll be looking at better green alternatives for our system from now on.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Consideration of amending chapter 35 entitled subdivision ordinance of the City of Danville, 1986, to eliminate the curb and gutter requirement and create entitled streetlights, I open the public hearing. Anyone desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. Anyone desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending chapter 35.5 entitled subdivision ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986 as amended, more specifically to amend Article 4, Section B, Item 1, Subsection 8, to eliminate the curb and gutter requirement and to create subsection K entitled streetlights.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Consideration of the donation of facility improvements by the Danville Science Center at the old Southern Railway Administration Building located at 657 Crackhead Street, Councilman Vogler.
Uh, yes, Mayor, and I don't know if it's a public comment, but I do know, before I read this, we've got some folks here from the Science Center-
I'm gonna recognize this.
My man. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the acceptance of a donation of facility improvements at the Danville Science Center.
Second by Councilman Buckner, will all of you all from the Science Center and donors, please stand. This is absolutely amazing. Thank you all. Please stand. Thank you so much. Stand up again, let's give you another hand. This is huge. Stand up one more time. I'm gonna yield to the city attorney. Usually, the city attorney doesn't speak much, but he and I have been very excited about this. City attorney, I'm sure there's some things you'd like to say.
Well, at the risk of embarrassing Mary Alice, who is here with the Danville Science Center, she was, she went to school in college in England and decided to come back and work for the Danville Science Center, so we're bringing them internationally back home, so...
You know what we always say, right? Stand up again. We gotta give you this. We welcome, welcome home. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
You said her name is Mary Alice?
Miss. Alice Buck Hayes.
You know what Mary said? She, Mary says she's never coming to council meetings no more.
Mr. Mayor-
We welcome you at any time.
I wanted to make a comment. Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
About the Science Center. Yeah, my four-year-old grandson from Charlottesville loves the Science Center. He asked repeatedly to come back. He's been three or four times. My two-year-old from Memphis loves the Science Center. They travel a long way to see our Science Center, so, great job.
Um, I'm trying to get her off the hook because I want her to come back, so let me keep going. Consideration of amending the fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation ordinance for a Virginia Land Conservation Foundation grant appropriated, Councilman Buckner.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from Virginia Land Conservation Foundation grant in the amount of $500,000 and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Mayo, first reading. Communication, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Deputy City Manager. Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
More this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
Sir.
If you would, call a roll, please.
Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to recognize a good friend, a good volunteer in our city, and one is doing so well and worked for a major power company in Richmond, Joe Carroll Sprattling Fragon, glad you're here. And I understand that your goddaughter, Gigi, is here also. Gigi, would you stand, please?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Thank you so much. Absolutely. I have a lot to say, Mr. Mayor, but I'll just focus on one issue, okay? Now, with regards to the firefighters, I have been here twenty-five years. Every single year, I have voted and supported every single thing that you do, okay? Twenty-five years. My name was called out tonight, that's okay. It's right here, so they call my name, okay? But I want you to know that I support the fire department. It's not just words, okay? It's in the record. I also support our city manager, who I think is doing an excellent job, an excellent job, okay? We have eleven hundred employees. Fairness is imperative, that every employee is treated fairly. I am a former employer myself. I had a hundred and sixty employees who worked for me, the organization, the board directors in Danville, Pitts and Bane County, Martinville, Henry County, and Campbell County. Fairness was always my number one priority. It is now, and from the time that I've worked with our city manager, it is his as well. I've served with every council member up here. I love them. We work well together. I know we care. I have not missed but one meeting, one meeting, in the last five years. So I can tell you, all council members support public safety, and you all are public safety. They also, we also support all eleven hundred employees. Now, I understand, you know, that people have to do what they have to do. I understand that. But when you call, you know, me out, and that's okay. I mean, I'm a public servant. Call me out. But I do want to respond by saying, you really could have saved the oxygen, okay? Because the record shows that I support you, and I will continue to support you. I support all eleven hundred employees, to include public safety, police department, Public Works, utility department, you name it. The list goes on. So if anybody wants to know where Sherman's standing, yeah, I get the emails, I get the phone calls, and that's okay. That's the way the system is supposed to work. But what I'm saying is, understand that when you ask for something, and that's your right to do, the Constitution gives you the right to petition your government. And you have come, and you have done that very well, and you continue to come. But I'm saying, I know these nine people up here, myself included, and our city manager, and the city attorney, and the city clerk, and the deputy city manager. I know these people. They love you, they support you, they don't show any favoritism that I've seen, okay? So we have to take things in stride. And what I mean by that is, we hear you loud and clear, you have a right to say that. But we also have a thousand more employees that we have to make sure are treated fairly as well. Mr. Mayor, I can continue, but let me just say this, and then I'll stop. Mr. Manager, you have a tough job, okay? And I think you handled it very well, okay?
Yes.
Very, very well. So sometime if you call names that your mother didn't name you, just smile. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, first of all, I did just want to apologize to the mayor and council. I know I've jumped in and hopped in a little more tonight than normal. I had...
Let me just, let me first of all say that we accept your apology, but you just, just as Councilman Saunders and every other council member, you is as passionate about our employees as all the rest.
Mayor, I appreciate that. I was gonna say, I had an energy drink before the meeting, and that sucker hit right about the time, so I'm, got a little caffeine flowing through me tonight, but I do appreciate that. I apologize in advance. I got a few questions and items I wanted to bring up, because it's been a little bit since we've had a meeting, and I've had different constituents reach out about things, and I wanted to try to either address or ask about while we were here tonight. I know everyone's excited about Tyson Foods and the construction and the work that's going on there, and with that being a Rifa project, it's joint city and county, so roads coming in and out, some's in the city, some's in the county, but I did want to bring up, I've had a few citizens mention that, obviously, when you've got that amount of construction, there's a lot of trucks coming in and out, the roads can get muddy, they can get, you know, a little messy out there. There has been concern, because they are getting that way, and it's gotten a little dangerous at times, depending on the weather. Unless it's happened in the last few days, there were no kind of warning signs for folks just driving through to let them know, be cautious of, you know, muddy road or things of that nature. I was just wondering if that's something we can, we can make happen out there, either through us or through the county, but to alert drivers that potentially there is gonna be some, some roads they want to take caution with.
Certainly, we can talk to our partners in Savanne County about that. I believe that would be under them, or maybe VDOT, to try to address, but we work with them, and we'd be happy to do so.
Thank you. Also, it's been mentioned to me, and I think probably everybody here on council and staff, we all know this too, but I did just want to bring it up again. As we continue to grow downtown, certainly in the River District and the growth we've had there, the number of pedestrian, or the amount of pedestrian traffic has increased quite a bit over the last few years, but the amount of car traffic has increased, and there has been a lot of folk, have been a lot of folks who have brought up concerns about traffic and people speeding through Craighead Street, and concern about, you know, with the crosswalks and things, you know, God forbid, we don't want somebody to get hit, but there's, there's been a lot of concern, and so if that's something we could, you know, alert, I know they're already aware of it, but the police department maybe try to ramp up, or we could look at some other practices and things to continue to improve pedestrian safety and try to cut down on some of the speeding that's, that's happening on Craighead Street. As I mentioned earlier, you know, the headaches of growth, I guess, but, you know, that is gonna become more and more of an issue, and we don't want anyone to, to be injured, certainly. I wonder, and city manager, I don't know if you'd be wondering, and if you don't know, or somebody doesn't know now, but I did just want to ask, because I've had people bring this up too, do we know who is responsible for the American flag that is at the historical canon that's on Mount Vernon? Because there's been a lot of focus, and I looked at it today, I went by there, it's, it's not in the shape befitting of the American flag. And so I don't know if that's, if we maintain the grounds there, or who does that, but if we could look into that, and if it's not us, speak to the appropriate people about trying to do something, something there, because there's a tree there, and the flag's kind of stuck up in the tree, and it's been like that for a bit, so would love to see if we can get that straight. One last thing, and then I'm done, I promise. Last year, I had asked council to consider raising the eligibility cap for seniors and the permanently disabled to receive tax relief. The previous amount was, the cap was set at twenty thousand dollars. If your income was over twenty thousand dollars, you weren't eligible for the, the real estate tax relief, and that had been in place for about twenty years. And so at the time last year, I'd asked if we could raise that to forty thousand, but council and staff and everyone, we worked through it, and there was a compromise to where we, we upped it to thirty thousand, and I'm appreciative that, that council, that we did that. That was a, a group effort that we made happen, and we wanted to see what the budgetary impact would be before we made the jump to forty thousand, and so I'm pleased to report that forty-six percent more seniors received tax relief this past year than the previous year, which is a great thing. The other great thing is, is that the budgetary impact to the city was minimal. It was seventeen thousand dollars more to the city than it was before, so did not have a significant budgetary impact to the city, but did help more folks who truly need it get tax relief. So with that in mind, I would ask that council please consider this, this go-around that we revisit the forty thousand dollar threshold that we were discussing last year before we settled on thirty, because as you could see, it didn't blow a hole in the budget, it barely made a dent, but it makes a big impact for those who really need it, our senior citizens on fixed income and the permanently disabled, to allow more folks to, to get that tax relief, and I hope council, we can have that discussion to make that happen, because I think about, you know, as the mayor said, there was a great event yesterday that we were at, at the expansion of House of Hope, and one of the speakers had talked about the growth, and again, we're talking tonight about the growth, and these wonderful things and growth and prosperity that we're all very excited about and looking forward to. But in the midst of all that growth and prosperity, we need to continue to make sure we're doing everything we can to help those who truly need the help the most, and so I'm hopeful that council again will revisit that and look to make that threshold forty thousand dollars, so more of our senior citizens and the permanently disabled will be able to have tax relief this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle. Mr. Buckner.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Councilman Saunders, for your statement, and I don't know if the firemen are aware, as the mayor also stated, we support you all one hundred percent, and that's an understood fact. We respect you all, but also we want to be respected. I've talked to several of the firemen, and it is a little bit disturbing to me that for the prosperity that is in Danville, that we are under other areas in our region. I respect the city manager highly, and it's a hard job that he has, but also I respect the one thousand workers other than the firemen in our area. So all we're trying to do, and I want to make it clear, as much as I can possibly be, is that we want to be fair. We are thankful for your work that you do in the community, and we understand how dangerous it is. I've talked to several of you all, you know what I feel. I don't think that we should be under, if anything, we should be above our region, and we're working on that. And I can say, as Councilman Saunders has said, we all are on your team. We have an excellent team here, council, we have an excellent mayor, and we are very concerned of where you are, and we stand behind you. So give us a little time to work this out, that we can be fair across the board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hood.
Um, yes, I want to use the word responsibility. Ms. Council's responsibility to make the best decisions is what's presented for all of Danville, citizens and employees, who want to collectively show our appreciation to all that came out tonight in the chambers. From our honorable mayor's mouth, he stated earlier, he said, "It's never gonna be us against them."
Never.
We support our employees and citizens of this great city. I would like to say thank you also to our city manager, deputy city manager, and staff for continuously doing diligent work, with working with council, with providing, providing resolving, you know, I'm sorry, providing data for what's presented to us, to us here. When we think about how to, to move forward when issues sit there, that may be challenging issues, what we do is we pour our heart into it, and I know the heart comes from the firefighter, and I understand that, and we appreciate that more than you know. We sit here at a threshold of wanting to move forward and getting things processed forward, because we're all collectively on the same page, we wanted to do so, and I feel strongly that we will have that resolved. But, you know, we can't say thank you enough to all our city employees, to our fire, to our rescuing, our policemen, but I could guarantee you one thing, with this whole staff, this whole council, city manager, deputy city manager, what we come here to do is provide and think and put our heart in making the best decisions for the city of Danville. So you have our support, and it's gonna be there, and I look forward to getting some things resolved, but it's just this, this threshold that we're getting to. So again, thank you for your support. Thank each and every one of your council members, because I know diligently we work together to be on the same page, so it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes, just quickly, you heard from each council member, it is, and we are as one, and our mayor is doing an awesome job of leading us, along with our city manager and deputy city manager, and city attorney and city clerk. We're all a team. City manager, you're doing a wonderful job. Fire, fire department, we hear you. We hear you every time. The service that you provide for us is definitely needed, and you all do a job one hundred. We see you every day, and we see the, we hear the sirens, we see the calls, and we know you're doing your job, but we are here for you, and we're all with you, and give us that chance, we're gonna have it for you, we're gonna work it out for you, and that's definitely, just give us that time. Thank you for Kenny Lewis and bringing the church-based tutorial to us, and churches that are coming, it's definitely something that's gonna help our children. I look back on it, and I see that education, as mayor said, that is our number one priority, and I, I had its vision, just like you do, about church-based tutorial, because not only it's helping the homes, it's helping that community, it's helping the school system, and our kids are thriving with it, and it's gonna grow even more and more. And yesterday on the House of Hope was a great opening that I truly enjoyed, was looking forward to seeing that place, and we know that come sadness, it does come joy to see families that are in need, that are there, and we're helping all our homeless and the individuals who are homeless. So I asked, and I get this call all the time about somewhere to go, and the House of Hope is the place that we lead all our citizens to when they are in need of shelter. So kudos to the House of Hope, and mayor, just keep doing the job we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yeah, as it's been alluded to by the mayor, we have three priorities. One is education, one is economic development, and one is public safety, and I consider this a major public safety problem, our firemen. All of the council is disturbed by the inequity of pay, the imbalance, the unfairness between our community, our top-rated fire department, and other communities. I've had conversations with other council members, and we pledge we're gonna make this right. I also don't need another pay study. It's self-evident. The numbers are there. This is unfair, so we pledge to make it right, and we will make it right. We just need to figure out how to pay for it and make it fair in a way that is fair to our other employees and our taxpayers. But like Mr. Vogler, I don't need another pay study. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. They, when I thank you council members for your passionate comments, when I say it's not, never gonna be us against them, here's what I mean. Couple of, about a month or so ago, the newspaper printed out the salaries of our school teachers, but they only printed out fifty-five thousand dollars or more, and I've asked a question of one of the school board members, I wonder what that number would be on the opposite side? The number of teachers that go into our school systems every day, who were in that paper, fifty-five thousand dollars or more, was very disturbing to me, because I can, being on the school board, working in the school system, I could possibly imagine the number of school system employees not making fifty-five thousand dollars or more, and all of the training they have to go through, and what they deal with, with kids who have all types of issues every single day. I thought about our public works individuals, who during all kinds of weather go into the communities, pulling trash, getting leaves, doing all types of debris. I looked at our utility workers, when a storm comes, and they going up in thunder and lightning, and the number of calls we get from people who are talking about their power outage, but those employees out there working very hard. I think about our IT department, and the things that IT is doing to keep spam from coming to our community and from our system. I say that to talk about every last one of our employees. They all go through training of some sort. Is the pay where it's supposed to be? I got a call today, and a school teacher's administrator was talking about, as I was trying to control one child, they called me stupid, they hit me, they were running down the hall, and then another child did the same thing. I say that because it's never gonna be us against them, and all the public outcry, and we do appreciate our firefighters, we do appreciate our utility workers, we do appreciate every city employee. Now, here's the part that's quite disturbing to me. While everybody is voicing themselves in rah-rah, this man and his family, when we talked about families, but is it fair to care and love? And we're not gonna stop caring and loving, but no one knows, his family was totally disrespected. He don't talk about it. You can't force your way to make things happen by going past his house, blowing horns at the fire department, and there were members of council, there were members of council who worked very hard, and when we heard the news, we got upset with the city manager, because that individuals, or those individuals, were not dealt with, and this is what kind of city manager had. He contacted other city managers and other chiefs. He said, "I'm in a precarious situation. Me and my family's been totally disrespected, and I've turned it over to HR." This council wasn't happening with the results of HR what happened, because that's not how we operate in Danville. As Councilman Saunders stated, come before your council, talk to us. You don't have to scream at us, you don't have to disrespect us, you don't have to holler, you're our employees. You all work with us, not for us, with us. It's never gonna be us against them. Am I, as a council member, happy with the school system's pay for our teachers? No. You heard Kenny Lewis and all these wonderful people talk about the challenges that our youth are facing today. Am I happy with what our firefighters are getting paid? No. Are we happy with our trash collectors and public works and parks and recreation? No. Why do you think our economic development department is working so hard to bring in Caesars and Tysons, because that brings more revenue into our community? The best part about this, for council as I close, is it brought things, thank you, firefighters, thank you. You brought it to our attention, that we were so busy trying to revitalize and reimagine Danville, getting entities and stuff in our community, we had to take a pause and focus on our employees, and that's what we've done. We've got Tysons, we got Caesars, and our economic department is done. Now we are pausing as a council, not one, the city manager, the city staff, the... is done. Now we are pausing as a council, not one, the city manager, the city staff, the city manager just had a retreat with his leaders. And every one of council members did not have to threaten the city manager or intimidate the city manager by saying, "This budget year, if you don't do raises, and if you don't support education, we are going to do this, and we're going to..." No, because he listens to us. Now, I don't think you've been paying attention, but there are some things that's been hitting us very hard. In the state of Richmond, our school systems funding that they're supposed to be getting, they're not getting that funding. So all of the persons that are support along with us, we have to also, we talked about all of our city employees, we also have to think about our citizens in the city of Danville. Because if we make commitments that we can't meet, we go into the public, say we want to raise taxes, and guess who's going to feel this thing? The young man spoke well. He talked about the prices of egg. That's just not affecting firefighters. There are citizens in this community that are struggling because we, how we know? You should have been with us at the homeless shelter, and it tore me up. That was nothing for me to celebrate. I left. Tommy Bennett will tell you. Barry Mayo will tell you. I immediately had to leave the homeless shelter because it hurt me so bad. And they'll tell you, I was the first one out the door, and when I went across the street, I waited for everyone to leave, and I went back over for a one-on-one tour, and I asked the following question. If you don't believe me, go by there and ask them. Ask Jude. I said, "What do we need to do?" Yes, it was a new place, and it's named after normal, but there's still things disturbing to me. And tomorrow at 12 noon, I'm meeting with members of the board from the housing, from the Hope of, because I'm not happy. We pausing. Councilman Vogler, Councilman Saunders, Councilman Campbell, they said, "We're pausing." Now, that doesn't mean Danville's not going to stop growing, but now it's time for us to think about other priorities, education, but city manager, to you and your family, we talk every day. When I, when Councilman Saunders was clapping, talked about you and the great work that you're doing, not one firefighter clapped for you. Everything that you've done, they've been blasting you on Facebook, and they're happy about it. That's not changing the man that you are. That's not changing the council that we are. We, when they go low, we don't go low. We're determined that we're going to move Danville forward, and all of, I like the way you said it, and all of us, that our haters keep hating, because the firefighters are going to get what they deserve, all of our city employees are going to get what they deserve. At the same time, we're not going to tax our citizens to get there. We're moving forward. The last thing we want to do is take five steps forward and many back. That's why we're supporting education. It's not just about building a track. What is the purpose of building a track when people can't buy eggs? We have teachers who are dealing with issues with kids. We got firefighters who running inside houses while individuals in the house are burning, and you're going to tell me we don't care? I started this meeting off caring and saying thank you. And each time you come, please keep coming, and saying we don't care, because you got a hurrah of people out there, many are not from Danville, many are not from this community, is pushing our community, saying, "Oh, they don't care." I concur with you, along with myself. Whatever you got to do to be best for your family, I made some decisions and changed jobs, because it was best for my family. But thank you. You are a good city manager. We work together every single day. And I'm sorry for what you and your fam, and, but I'm gonna tell you this, and I'm gonna call on, you're a good man, because I don't know any many individuals, and all of them can print, they can post whatever they want to post, but people are human, and I don't know many individuals. When you go and try to do something to someone's family, they still can sit here when your family's disrespected. I've been there. I don't deal with those people no more. But yet, you still sit here, and you still said, "I'm going to do everything I possibly can for not just the firefighters, for everybody in this community." You're a hell of a man. You're a good man. And yet, they won't clap for you. I know people who scandalized me in my family's name. I don't have nothing to do with them, and I never want to have anything to do with them, because I have to protect my family. But yet, you sit here as a man, when people are riding past your house with fire trucks, blowing horns, you're employees. And when council members said, "We wanted more action," you said, "No, the record is not that bad," and they don't even know that. So keep typing, keep talking about council, keep talking about, keep calling our names. It's never going to be us against them. I stand on it. Keep coming. Thank you, Councilman Saunders, for telling, this is your right. Keep coming. Keep with the Facebook. Keep with the signs out there. Honk if you love. Keep, do all that. It's never going to be us against them. Never. Never, ever, ever, ever. ZZ, stand up. Please stand up, ZZ. This is a young lady that's visiting us, Ms. Hicks. I'm sorry you had to go through all this tonight, but I'm going to reward you. When this is over with, this is a young lady that's visiting with us tonight. When this is over with, I want you to come here. All council's going to get here and get a picture with you. Is that okay? And thank you for, let's give her a hand for being here tonight. On that note, we are adjourned. ZZ, we adjourned. ZZ, come on up here. Let's get a picture with you.